Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on the sixth day of April 2023. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here. Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier is not with us.
Councilman Bouvier has an excused absence.
Councilman Skivoni.
Present.
Okay, so we have four. One more than a quorum. We're in good shape and we can begin. So the first item of business is to review the draft agenda for the April 11, 2023 Town Board meeting. You all should have a copy. So we have three public hearings. And this, by the way, is a one o'clock meeting here at Town Hall. It'll also be hybrid. The first one is a public hearing for the consideration of a one-year agricultural use agreement for 23 through 24 pursuant to Chapter 247 of the town code. And the second is a public hearing to consider the acquisition of lands of Jill Rappaport, 427 Illinoisak Path and a handload of water mill. And the third is a public hearing to accept a deed of residual fee from Joseph F. Gaza for properties to be retained as open space located at North Sea pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and 247 General Municipal Law of the State of New York. And then we get to resolutions. And Tommy John, will you read John's resolutions?
Sure.
All right. Rick, you're the first.
Okay. Town Board Resolution ID 42990, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni and Councilwoman McNamara. Authorized change order for subaqueous water main crossings, Chinacock Canal at Machut Beach and Ponpon Bridge at Lighthouse Road.
The second one, 42942, authorized purchase of Technology Catalyst Solutions from CDW-G using Sourcewell Contract 43017. Authorized supervisor to execute agreements with some 20 QB vendors for production assistance.
Town Board Resolution 43016, to authorize supervisor to execute any and all agreements with Harris Govern, a division of N. Harris Computer Corporation, for an upgrade of their open-form software solution. Town Board Resolution 42942, co-sponsored by Councilman Bouvier and myself, to authorize the supervisor to sign a satisfaction of mortgage on a community development block grant loan.
Town Board Resolution ID 42917, authorized supervisor to sign a contract extension with Mercury Marine for Mercury Marine parts.
43014, authorized supervisor to sign contract with H2M Architects, Engineers, and Land Surveying for professional services related to improvements to the building department interest.
42901, authorized supervisor to sign contract with Nelson &amp; Pope for professional services related to speed limit reduction at Big Fresh Pond Road in North Sea.
Resolution ID 43012, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara. Authorized supervisor to sign a no-cost extended contracts with Palace Electrical Controls Incorporated for the electrical portion, Philip Ross Industries for the plumbing mechanical portion, and Eastend Material DBA Eastend Group for the general construction, for the well-held treatment for the removal of iron and magnesium at Plant Number Four.
Okay. 43011, authorized purchase and installation of pavers from Dell Al Concrete Corp. for the Windsor Heart Project using Suffolk County EPW contract. So that's actually the installation of the pavers. So the pavers are being produced by one company, Paver Art, and these guys will get the contract to assemble it. And we're looking to do the Heart opening on, I think it's June 26th if I'm correct. I think it's the 10th anniversary of the decision that legalized same-sex marriages, the Windsor decision for which the, you know, Edie Windsor, who the Heart is memorializing. So I think it's all going according to schedule and appreciate all the work that everybody's been doing on it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. And you guys will all obviously get notified about the time. Place is obvious. It's right up front of Town Hall. 42915, oh, that's John.
42915, co-sponsored with Councilman Bouvier. Authorized the purchase of heavy equipment parts, accessories, supplies, and related services from Omni Partners, contract with Caterpillar.
Resolution 42921, authorized supervisor to execute a 2023 license agreement with Suffolk County Community College for the use of Eastern Campus Pool for lifeguard training.
Yay.
Wow, finally.
That's good.
John would probably want to be a co-sponsor on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Me too, probably.
Let's put him on.
You know, I was very involved with that project when I set the count. So yeah, I'd like to co-sponsor too. You want to go on too, everybody?
Yeah, okay.
Will you put everybody on?
Everybody on.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Ford, 42521, authorized supervisor to execute a contract extension with J&amp;B Auto Salvage Inc. for removal of abandoned junk and decommissioned vehicles.
Resolution ID 42913, authorized supervisor to execute a donation agreement for the installation of an irrigation system at North Sea Community Park.
43010, to declare item surplus and authorize disposal of computer equipment.
42972, rescinds Town Board Resolution 2023-123, 2023-315, and authorize the supervisor to execute a contract with Nelson Pope Engineering, Architecture, and Land Surveying, PPLC, for professional services related to various projects.
43002, 2023 Notice to Bidders for a 2022 Ford F-250 Super Duty with Open Utility Service 42925, co-sponsored with Councilman Bouvier, myself. This is 2023 Notice to Bidders of a 2022 Ford F-350 SRW454 Supercab. Okay. Town Board Resolution 42938, second Notice to Bidders for a 2022 Ford F-600 Dump Truck, and that's sponsored by Councilman Bouvier.
42969, amends 23 adopted budget for ambulance districts. 43006, authorized expenditure from restricted account for the Windsor Heart Project. 42997 establishes and appoints members to the Bel Air Cove Motel Advisory Committee. This is actually something we're going to talk about in the work session. Just basically, Rick and I have been working on putting together an advisory committee to sort of review the two proposals, but also other proposals, including the passive park use. And we've put together a list of stakeholders in the community, but we'll review that in work session. And if later on, and if you guys want to make some changes, well, we can modify the bill. Hopefully, we'll make those changes before the agenda gets published. 42975, reappoint Jeremiah Collins to Conservation Board.
Town Board Resolution 42943, appoint Cecilia Gardner to the North Sea Citizens Advisory Committee.
42931, it's continuation of legal services by Cofflin and Gerhardt LLP to provide legal services regarding personnel matters relating to the Southampton Town Police Department for 2023. 42923, resolution of adoption amending various sections of the town code in connection with retail cannabis dispensaries within the town of Southampton. We'll tell the hearing on that.
42919, 2023 International Dark Sky Week.
Town Board Resolution 42918, this is Authorization of Cost Reimbursement Waiver for Hampton Bay's High School Class of 2023 Commencement Parade, held on June 20th, 2023, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Sunday, if I could be added as a co-sponsor, please?
Certainly.
Town Board Resolution 42965, co-sponsored with Councilman Bouvier. Authorization of Cost Reimbursement Waiver for the Hand Aldridge American Legion Post 94 Annual Memorial Day Parade on May 29th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00.
Can I be added to that, Sunday?
Yeah, me too.
Me too, yeah.
Yeah. That's the whole board.
ID number 42987, authorized temporary road closure and traffic pattern for Jobbs Lane Bridge Repair at Bridgehampton.
42962, spoke, co-sponsored with Councilman Bouvier and myself. Cost reimbursement waiver for Itry Hampton's Youth Triathlon on July 15th, 2023, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Town Board Resolution 42967, co-sponsored with Councilman Bouvier again. Cost reimbursement waiver for the Remsenberg-Speake Union Free School District Annual Memorial Day Parade on May 26th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m.
At 11:30?
To 11:30. 10:00 a.m. to 11:30. That would be a short one.
That's a long walk.
Yeah. Say that, walking pretty fast. All right. 42857, accept resignation of Ashley and Dexter, Senior Office Assistant in Human Resources. 42985, accepts retirement of Stephen Miller, Southampton Town Police Detective Sergeant. 42902 reinstates Jacqueline McKay to Senior Justice Court Clerk position in Justice Court. And the next one, 42800, accepts retirement of Jacqueline McKay, Senior Justice Court Clerk in Justice Court. And then 42573, appoint Selena Burbig to Justice Court Director in Town Justice Court. 43001, appoint James Moran to Maintenance Mechanic 3 position in the Water District. 42995, appoint Julie Fitzgerald to Associate Administrator position in Housing and Community Development. 42570, appoint Kirk Bayer to Custodial Work 1 position in Municipal Works. 42863, appoint Matthew Palmeri to Records Management Assistant position in the Town Clerk's Office. 43000, appoint Merritt Miller to Maintenance Mechanic 2 in Senior Services. 42733, authorizes hiring of Charles Stewart Jr., Police Officer Stark. 42820, authorize reimbursement for drug court judges' attendance at the New York Association of Treatment Court Professionals Conference, whereas the New York Association of Treatment Court Professionals held a conference in Saratoga. Why does it say that? I think that somehow the first whereas ended up in the title.
Yeah.
So can, yeah, so can we end it after Professionals Conference? And then we bring the whereas down into the body? Sunday, you got that?
Okay, so this actually is a whereas that is not where it's supposed to be. Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, somehow the first whereas ended up bolded and in the title.
Okay.
All right. Authorize, up to 42924, authorize Sergeant to attend Advanced Crisis Negotiation Course. 42947, extends probationary period for Automotive Mechanic 5.
ID number 42914, co-sponsored with Councilman Bouvier. Notice of Public Hearing to amend Town Code Chapter 312, Vehicles and Traffic. Parking prohibited on portions of Windermere Court and Speake.
Town Board Resolution ID 43004, Notice of Public Hearing to Consider Authorizing the Triton Lane East Bog Beach Parking Pilot Program.
Sunday, could I be added to that, please?
Certainly.
So that's going to be April 25th to 6:00 p.m. And we should tell you a little bit about what that is, no?
Sure. I mean, we could, we could do it at the meeting, but it's, it's basically a pilot program to allow daytime beach driving or daytime beach parking on the beach, a little to the, it's actually, I think, at the actual, a total of 150 feet between Hotdog Beach and east of Triton Lane. And it's no more than 30 cars. It's a pilot program to open up an area west of the canal to daytime beach driving. And it's only on, let me see, Friday, the Friday, it's between the Friday immediately preceding Memorial Day and the 15th of September, between the hours of 9:00 and 6:00. And it's only on...
It's on Sundays, right?
Yeah.
Sunday, Sunday.
Holiday Mondays?
Yep.
Sundays and holiday Mondays. So currently, there's only one place in the town of Southampton where you could drive onto the beach, some parks during, I guess, the, the summer season or whatever, Memorial Day through, what is it, Labor Day?
Okay.
So this would open up a second area, though limited in scope east of the canal.
So, so Jim is going to amend it because right now it says between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And it doesn't specify the days, so we're going to add Sundays and holidays?
Just, just limited to Sundays.
Limited to Sundays and holidays.
All right, so we, we should publish it in the correct form.
Yes. And Jim's going to get that change.
Make sure that it gets published.
Whoops.
Yeah.
Pretty big omission.
So it's a small area, and we don't think it'll, it'll have any impact on Hotdog Beach or the house to the east because it's a small area. Give it a try, and I think people will be respectful, and we'll see how it goes.
Oh, yeah, so let's get at least the hours and days correct.
Yep.
All right, so, Jimmy, you'll get that too, Sunday. Okay. Cindy, you're still on.
Town Board Resolution ID 40431, co-sponsored with Councilman Bouvier. Notice of Public Hearing to Consider a Change of Zone from R-80 to Agricultural Conservation and to Consider Acceptance of an Agricultural Conservation District Easement for property located at 50 Jobbs Lane Bridgehampton, tax map as indicated, with corresponding amendment to the zoning map.
Town Board Resolution 42807, sponsored by Councilman Bouvier. Accept a deed of residual fee from Joseph F. Gaza for properties to be maintained as open space located at North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 963-4-30.1 and 40.1 pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate and Section 247 of General Municipal Law of the State of New York.
Can I ask a question, not about that one, but the one before it, where we're changing the zone from R-80 to Agricultural Conservation District? Jimmy, is that a zoning category?
Is the agricultural...
Maybe Janice, do you know? So we're changing the zone from, on a property from R-80 to ACD, Agricultural Conservation District? Is that an actual zoning category?
It's...
It's an overlay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good morning, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. That is the replacement of the AgPDD, the new, you know, so you're basically, remember, you're purchasing an easement and placing restrictions on the property. So it's not a, technically, a zoning category, but it's the idea of an agricultural PDD. It's the new, the new one.
We didn't get rid of AgPDD, so, did we?
We did.
We did.
And that's the...
And the title's changed, so it couldn't be upzoned.
Yes.
Okay. And we, we called it, instead of AgPDD, we called it Ag Conservation District.
Yes.
Okay.
It's like an overlay where you purchase the development rights and...
So is the underlying zoning still going to be R-80?
It is, technically, but you're taking away the development rights. So there's no development rights under R-80 anymore. Once you purchase the, the rights, then it's just an easement.
There are two.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so then 42851, resolution of adoption, accepting agricultural scenic and drainage easements in connection with the subdivision application of M4 Lumber Holdings LLC in Bridgehampton. And then I have...
Have to add on.
Just one.
Pass those down, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Pass this down. All right, so there's one more. This has the, the ID number of 42897. It's a resolution setting a public hearing to consider amending Town Code Section 330-77 to increase the permitted required rear yard lock coverage percentage. And maybe, Janice, you want to explain what this one is?
20 to 50 percent.
So, and Katie Garvin will present this information, but just to give you a little bit of background on where this came from, is that we, we find a lot of people wanting to put things in their side yard. And, and an older interpretation was, as long as it's behind the house, the side yard didn't necessarily matter. But it is truly still a side yard. And, and the root of the problem, when you really look at it, is not the side yard. It's that there's a restriction on your rear yard. And so we're just trying to alleviate the pressure of people being not able to actually use their rear yard area to put the things they need there. They're only allowed to use 20% of it. So if you allow them to use 50% of their rear yard area, then they're not trying to squeeze everything in the side yard.
And they don't have to cover it.
And we think that will help the whole problem. And that's our recommendation.
Is that going to give people suddenly the ability to add a whole bunch of more structures, like pools and tennis courts and things like that, that they weren't able to do because of that 20%?
Well, they come and give variances all the time. And so you know something's wrong with the zoning when everybody is asking for 30% or 40% or 50% anyway.
There's still a total yard cut.
There's still a to, there's still a total lock coverage required. And so that will still maintain. But why squeeze everything in a side yard when you've got this rear yard and there's an ambiguous number there that someone made up somewhere along the line and said 20%?
So that was pushing people to not put a shed in their backyard, but put it next to their neighborhood.
Instead in the side yard. And so we think alleviating that pressure in the rear yard, I mean, it's not really fair. It is your property. Like, why can't you use it? Like, it's not entirely fair that you can't use your rear yard.
And this frees up some of the ZBA's time as well.
And it frees up the ZBA from having to keep issuing variances on something that just...
That they're issuing all the time.
Right. We're not saying you can back right up to your neighbor or bother anybody.
We're not changing your total lock cover.
Coverage. We're not changing the total lock coverage. We're just saying...
We're just allowing more of it to go in the backyard rather than the side yard.
Where it's technically supposed to be.
Mm-hmm.
It's just an arbitrary restriction that needs to, a little bit of pressure to be alleviated there. And then the rest of it, I think, will subside. So that's our recommendation. If it, you know...
Is this something the zoning board has asked for?
Well, Katie works with the zoning board, and she has watched all these variances. And in talking it through with the building department as well, we think that, you know, instead of everybody trying to push into the side yards, why don't you just let them use their rear yard, which they have every, they should have every right to do.
And there's been a conflict in the interpretation of the code over the years.
Well, right. And I think that our current chief has the correct interpretation. It is the correct one. Maybe it wasn't followed over the years, but his interpretation is accurate.
Right.
So I'd like to support that and instead look at the real root of the problem and fix that instead.
Right. Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, we, since it's sort of related to the agenda, and I want to be able to get the agenda in motion, I'm wondering if we should take the Bel Air discussion first and then the moratorium. I don't think it's going to be more than a couple minutes, but it could affect the resolution. This is the resolution on page 25. So, you know, we all were part of the special meeting the other night. And, you know, the meeting notice was for the two different proposals, the senior housing and the boutique hotel proposal. But, you know, pretty much every speaker spoke on alternatives, particularly passive park type of idea. And though I, I still think the urban renewal, the revitalization plan makes sense for the community in terms of keeping the property on the tax rolls and helping the local economy and the stores and restaurants, I, you know, I don't think I have properly convinced the community that that's the right thing for the community. So the idea of now, and we always said we would vet it with the community. We thought the public hearing was a good vetting. But the idea of setting up an advisory committee to sort of look at everything, look at the two proposals, but also other alternatives, either a passive park or maybe a park with some things that could promote tourism in the area, you know, like, you know, games and things, you know, cornhole and shuffleboard and bocce and, you know, maybe mini golf, maybe a food truck, you know, there's all kinds of different possibilities that might actually help the restaurant next door and the market across the way. So, you know, Rick and I tried to come up with stakeholder groups. We're not trying to stack this committee in any way. We're just trying to figure out how do we get a committee that is reflective of the entire community? So the first thought was to have the liaison serve as a non-voting member, an ex-official member, that would be Rick, as the chair. And then we'd put the chair of the, the CAC, or if the chair wanted to designate somebody else, I'm on page 26 right now in the packet. And the second person would be the chair of the Civic Association. And then, or they're designee. All these are, or designate. And then the president of the Beautification Association, the superintendent of the schools, a PTA member, a president, the president or designee, the PTSA, which is a different parent group, the Hampton Bay's Chamber of Commerce Director, the Hampton Bay's Fire Department Chief or Designee, Hampton Bay's Rotary Club President or Designee, Lions Club President or Designee. I should say or Designee under that one. It doesn't, just says President. The Hampton Bay's American Legion Commander or Designee, a neighborhood representative selected by the board, Town Board, Hampton Bay's Library Board of Trustees, Hampton Bay's Volunteer Ambulance Department, Town Board President, I should say or Designee after that. And Hampton Bay's Resident at Large, appointed by the Town Board. And we wouldn't want to make the committee too much bigger than that. And we said that they would meet over the next three months, twice, twice a month, and report their recommendation by July 15th of '23. And we asked them to, in here, to consider a number of different aspects, such as economic, community, environmental, neighborhood, school, traffic, and tax impacts. And also the cost of whatever they're proposing. If the town is going to not sell or lease the property, what are the ongoing maintenance costs, whether it's utilities or garbage or lawn mowing? Obviously, if, you know, we tear down the building, there's a cost to tearing down the building. If we have to fix the bulkhead, there's a cost to fixing the bulkhead. So, you know, we can look at both ongoing costs as well as ongoing revenue if some of these ideas are revenue generating. Rick, I'll turn it over to you and then anyone else who wants to lay in on this.
Yeah, so it's a similar process. We take, you know, anytime that we, you know, propose a new park, we get the community's input into it. I've reached out to a number of these organizations already. Most want to put two people on. I told them they have to pick one. We've gotten probably, the Civic Association President will be joining us. The Fire Department has committed. The American Legion has committed. The Beautification, the Le, Chamber of Commerce has committed. So, you know, we're getting there on designees. But, you know, I think it's a good idea, not only to re-explain the two proposals that we had, had brought forward, but also, in all fairness, to change the, to talk about the changing landscapes from when this started in 2018. You know, the capacity's a little different in hotels in Hampton Bay's. The need for a recreational component at that location could also be a tourism draw. So there's a lot of things we need to discuss as we go on with this.
All right. Tommy John, any...
I appreciate the approach. I, I think, to me, this is very similar to a commission, you know, like, it's, it's focused on one particular aspect of Hampton Bay. So I appreciate you all working on this and, you know, getting more input from the community. We certainly have heard input from the community, and this will help inform our, our decision as we, as we move forward with this property.
You know, and with that, too, the, you know, we're operating under an adopted revitalization plan, which conforms to New York State's Urban Renewal Law. So if this committee recommends something other than that plan, we, we do have to amend the plan. We'll have to amend the plan. We'll have to work with the proposals, proposers, proposers, too. We'll have to amend the plan and we'll have to work with the proposals, proposals, proposers too. You know, we may have to formally reject those proposals because, um, you know, they submitted based on the public hearing, the RFP and the public hearings. So Cindy, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I just, you know, I hope it moves along quickly. And, I mean, are we limiting it to what we're talking about or just anything goes kind of deal?
Um, I, you know, I feel like if they want, if this committee wants to hear other ideas, like, you know, like reducing one of the proposals. Like toward the end of the meeting, the boutique hotel proposer said, well, I, you know, I could cut my proposal in half and you could have a half a park and half economic development. So, you know, and, and other people have thrown out things from camping to dredge spoil sites.
Energy golf to just a butterfly garden. I mean, it's a park.
Trustee offices.
And agriculture, you know, shellfish hatchery. So, you know, I, I, I'm planning on accepting whatever the recommendation is of this committee. I feel like it's reflective of the community and if they have an idea that's at odds with what I had hoped, um, whatever the committee comes up with, I, I plan to support.
Sounded like the trustees were also offering the use of, of their property next door to combine this. So I think that should be part of the mix as well.
There's a lot of things that could be in the mix. That's why we need to discuss all the possibilities.
Yeah, I thought of putting a trustee rep on, but then knowing that they're actually competing for the property, I thought that might be a conflict.
Hmm.
So, um, but I, hopefully that they will at least participate and follow the process. Um, you know, and, and in terms of picking community reps, we said, Rick and I said, one neighborhood rep. I'm assuming that's like to somebody who lives on Penny Lane or very close to this property. And then one community at large rep.
I know the neighbor did reach out to us, so maybe that's where, where we should start.
Yeah. I, I've had a few people in that area who have indicated to me that they would love to serve. Um, you know, could we add more members? Um, you know, we've tried to stick primarily to heads of organizations, but it is possible that there are other stakeholders that we've left out. So um, I'm open to adding additional members.
I just would love to see that building gone.
Well, that's another thing I wanted to ask you guys. Um, we could tear the building down, you know, though there, there's a, there's some positives and negatives to it. Now that the Health Department has waived or signed off on our flow, we don't, no longer need to keep it there uh, for, for the Health Department. But if, let's say you were doing an agriculture facility there, having a cinder block building, you know, and then putting, you know, tanks inside for growing oysters and clams and things. That might actually be perfectly suited for that type of purpose. So we might, we might want to wait. The other issue is our cost of tearing it down is double probably what the private sector costs are for various reasons. So um, when we were considering the two proposals for economic development, we assumed that that was part of the cost of the developer and the town would not have to pay for it. Though I realize symbolically knocking it down would hardly be welcome in the community. So um, I, I'm not against knocking down. I think we should first maybe look to see if it's suitable for an agriculture facility, but if it's not...
If it's not, then we should at least start the process of getting things in place because we know, as we know, that doesn't happen very quickly. So I'd hate to get to July or August and then decide we're knocking it down and then have it be up until, you know, the coming year again.
We, we'd have to talk to Tom Houghton on it. Is it, would the board like to spend the money knocking it down?
I'd like to at least explore it.
Yeah, I would too, please.
Uh, okay, let's, let's get a number.
Okay.
Let's find out what it's gonna cost.
You know, at the same time, I want to task whoever's responsibility to see the differences between the town owning it, gifting it to CPF, swapping it out for another piece. What are the advantages of it being a CPF property versus a town owned property? I want to make that clear to the public too.
And I just, as we move forward and we, you know, we, we weigh other ideas, at, one thing that has to happen is Penny Pond has to get dredged. That has to happen. So I think another aspect of, you know, as we explore moving the, the building, we also need to get those dredge spoils tested just to know what we're even dealing with when it comes to, is it something that we can, you know, just de-water and remove from the property? Or is it something that's gonna need, you know, carting offsite? So I'd like to at least get it tested.
We don't know where those dredge spoils are gonna go.
No, but I would like to get it tested.
And where they're gonna de-water.
That basically will tell us what we can and can't do.
Right, that's a trust, trustees should do that. Um, and you know, there was, and some of the people were saying this should absorb title surges and things like that, that we should get rid of the bulkhead. I mean, the committee can look at...
I don't think you can get rid of the bulkhead there because you, you destroy that waterfront business across the way.
I think you do. That's what I was gonna say. I know the trustees were recommending a low-silt bulkhead, but you have the potential of sedimentation in that end of the creek that could make it unnavigable. Um, and you know, you could potentially be putting that little marina across the way out of business.
Can I ask what, what the trustees were recommending? Frankly, I, I heard a number of different things from the trustees.
They wanted trustee offices.
Right, there was a, they, they were interested in the property, but they also said that they would participate in some public access. So I, I don't get the sense that...
Offices, a shop, boat storage, so basically like a...
Kayaks.
And, and, and open to the public in conjunction with their property. Okay.
And possibly purchasing it over time from the town. So that wasn't really clear.
But I mean, that's taxpayer money, so it's...
But it, right now it's general fund, then it'll go on the trustee line.
But it's still taxpayer money.
You know...
For, 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 it's taxpayers paying for a property they already purchased. I mean, it's what it is.
Well, it would be, well, for the improvements anyway.
Well, no, because if we did the economic development plans, not only would be fully reimbursed, we'd have an extra three hundred thousand dollars for blight mitigation, which is something, you know, we can dismiss and say it's not needed. Or, you know, I think let the committee look at that. I think that goes into the, the plus column in, in terms of those, uh, those two proposals.
In other words, that goes away if we make the park, right?
The general fund gets a million two and the blight mitigation fund gets three hundred thousand.
Right.
And we have no ongoing costs. And I have to go back to Lisa because I, Lisa Gorey on the uh, the tax implications. I want to make sure that she has analyzed on the hotel one correctly what the tax was. On the senior one, I might have misread and said the senior one was like forty-eight thousand or forty-five thousand. But the hotel one, initially she had said over a hundred thousand. And then I thought she had corrected it to a lower number. I just wanted to clarify that because that's what the school will get each year.
And that's a question that the committee should, should discuss, you know, the tax implications. Uh, you know, we heard from our residents that they didn't mind the extra taxes in Hampton Bays, which is a different tune than what we were hearing from years ago and that's...
That was a priority to lower property taxes in Hampton Bays.
I'm happy to hear that in a way.
If it's no longer a priority, that's great.
That's good news.
I just would like to explore removing that property and also test those dredge spoils so we, or at least while we're having these meetings, we're moving towards something.
Well, that's on our end, but I really think that's, the trustees would, right? Do the sediment, they're involved with the dredging.
Well, we can have them test it.
That's bottom line now.
Yeah, do you want to, you're the liaison?
I'll reach out.
I actually sent them that request a few weeks ago when we had a report that there was some grant money for that. And they uh, they were going to take a look at it at that point.
You know, and we, we do have to think about when it eventually is dredged. Where, where is the de-watering going to occur? Um, we may not have a spot.
There currently isn't, but if you are removing that building and you're removing, you know, all the asphalt and stuff, you could potentially, some of it could stay on site to, you know, fix the grate.
Right.
I know we did that at, in East Quogue at Bay Avenue.
Yeah, one of the developers actually mentioned that.
Yeah, I think that's worth looking at.
But we've been getting that request for four years.
It has to happen.
Yeah, but there's no plan.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and I know from another one of these that, you know, siding a dredge spoil site is not so easy. Because of concerns about smells associated with the drying sediments. And uh, you know, putting it right next to a restaurant may not be perfect. I, I, I don't know. So uh, you know, it's something to look at. But I think that I, the restaurant I'm sure would agree that it needs to get dredged. So um, that may be the only opportunity to set.
They don't want to use their parking lot, obviously, so...
Yeah. Well, maybe it could be done at a time of year that it's not harmful. All right. Um, all right, so we're gonna, other than the two changes, uh, uh, in terms of designees, that's the only, uh... Cindy, did you get that?
I did.
You know, on Hampton Bay's Lions Club president or designate and Hampton Bay's Volunteer Ambulance Board President or designate. Okay, thank you for that.
And if I could just mention something in regards to the Windsor project.
The which project?
The resolution about the Windsor project for outside. New York State has adopted legislation that they pushed out to all of the town clerks to execute. And that is a one-day marriage officiant license. So now people um, can come in once a, it runs with the municipality that issues the license. So if someone has issued a license, no matter where they go to get married, because licenses are good throughout New York State, no matter which town clerk's office you acquire them from. But if you get a license in a specific municipality and somebody wants to come in and get a one-day marriage officiant license, they need to get it from the same municipality where the license was issued. They're twenty-five dollars and they come in. If the couple has already gotten their license here, they fill out the form with all the information. They show us some ID and they give us their application. And we're going to give them a speci- a license specific to a day and a location that anyone can now perform marriage ceremonies with the permission of the couple, obviously. So, um, they're allowing us to keep the entire amount of the money because this was not something that the New York State Town Clerks Association was involved in any discussions on. The governor decided they adopted the legislation and that they didn't have the wherewithal to execute this on a state level. So they pushed it out to the local municipalities with, without any discussion. So now you don't necessarily need to appoint people here and there for specific dates. They can come in and get a license on their own. And I just wanted you to be made aware of that because we're just about to push this out onto the website. We're working with, with IT and with CRC shortly to make everyone aware of this. So I didn't want you to get caught off guard.
So you don't have to be in the clergy of any kind, you don't have to live in the town, they just come in?
Well, the clergy are entitled to...
They're entitled to do it.
You know, they're exempt from this.
If somebody wants, if a couple wants to get married, they can pick anyone they want to marry them. Whether they live in the town or not, whether they're a priest or rabbi or whatever.
State resident? Any citizen?
Anybody.
There, there's not a lot of parameters other than what's required, the information that's required on the application. And the majority of that information comes from the marriage license. It's about the officiant, um, not the officiant, it's about the, the couple getting married, um, their information, um, location of where the ceremony is going to take place. It doesn't even have to take place necessarily in the town of Southampton. It, it's all related to the issuance of the marriage license. Because as I said earlier, licenses, people acquire licenses all the time from other municipalities and then come here to get married because the, the license is good throughout New York State.
They're essentially a witness.
Well, no, they're not a witness because they still need two witnesses or one, one witness legally to sign. And I, you know, put some of that information out as well that they don't have.
So if they get the marriage um, officiant certificate from you, they can actually perform the wedding outside of the town of Southampton? As long as it's in New York State?
That's my understanding, as long as it, because the reason why it has to be issued by the um, municipality that issues the marriage license is that, that the license is filed for, you know, all time with the issuing agency. So if you get your marriage license here in the town of Southampton and you go and get married in Brookhaven, say, the license isn't filed in Brookhaven, it's filed where you apply for it.
That's new.
So, yes, so, so keeping the officiant information intact with the license where it's filed, I think, is the intent. So at that point, they can go wherever they choose in New York State.
Now, are there rules in terms of, like, does the officiant have to ask certain questions? Like, are there laws that say you must, you know, obviously you have to have witnesses, but you, you have to say the things like, is there anyone who objects to this, you know?
Well, I don't think there's a marriage...
Is there a...
Police in regards to what's actually said, but at some point I believe they are required to ask, you know, if they take each other to be their spouses.
That question, yeah.
Yes, yes, that's an essential part. People don't usually bring people to ceremonies that are going to object. So I think that's more of a formality and you watch on TV. But um, the um, there's, there's no parameters for that part of it. There are requirements that we require as the issuing agent of the license. You know, it has to, I give instructions on how to fill it out properly as I've provided to you when you first got started. Um, so, you know, they have to be filled out in, completely filled out with where they are located. That's why us gathering some of the information in advance as to where they're going to be is helpful in providing them the information. They need to accurately fill it out. It's new and people are starting to call. So your offices, I mean, I had the senator's office call because a constituent called their office in order to try and find that information because this came down from New York State. So they're not quite sure where to look for the information. So I've actually had probably half a dozen inquiries this week so far. So this could be my new revenue stream. But um, just wanted to...
Now, and also like, once we have the marriage platform, can we...
We'd love to have a gazebo as well for sun and...
Well, we can talk about that and that could keep some of the cherry blossoms from falling on the beautiful pavers.
Well, you know, when it's really sunny out and also when it's drizzling a little bit, we could still go outside and use...
Right, that would be nice. Can, are, are we permitted to charge anything for using the platform?
Once there is a specified location, I believe it's um, then called a facility use. Um, other municipalities, I've researched this over the years quite often, but since I was performing the majority of them on the lawn or in my office, that didn't qualify. Because, you know, we're a destination location for many people that come from other areas, not within our municipality to get married here. So for me to, you know, schedule those types of appointments frequently takes away from my duties here, you know, that, so...
You know, I'm...
We did look into it. Several municipalities do have um, specific locations designated for marriages. And this clearly would be that, I think, would fall into that category, but I can...
And then we have, you know, there's roughly two hundred hearts as part of this platform that can be engraved. I think we're starting out with forty or so or fifty. But I imagine that people who get married there, people might want to give them a present by getting a heart engraved to commemorate that day. So I think that uh, that may be additional revenue, though. That revenue will go, once the heart is fully paid for, it goes to, we agreed that that would go to the health clinic. So, but it could, has the potential to raise a couple hundred thousand dollars for that health clinic, which would be nice. Um, okay, thank you. Um, all right, so let's move on in the agenda to um, battery energy storage. Um, there is a request for a moratorium. And we have Janice Shearer, our Town Planning and Development Administrator. And Deputy Town Attorney Christine Scolera is here. And Deputy Supervisor Frank Sapon is here. Frank, did you want to participate in this?
I'm, I'm here to listen.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Janice, you want to introduce this?
Sure. So um, as you know, in two thousand and twenty-one, the board adopted the battery energy storage regulations. And we have some, we had a couple of applications come through the planning board. The planning board um, felt somewhat uncomfortable with, we had nicer to come and do some... The planning board, um, felt somewhat uncomfortable with, we had NYSER to come and do some, uh, training. And, um, we had some, we're, you know, some were trying to get them on board technically about. And there's just a level of uncomfort there, because, um, more and more, I think, communities are worrying about, uh, batteries. I think that we need to first and foremost, like, confirm the fact that they're a definite option, like, there's no way around it if you want to have renewable energy, right? We know the sun doesn't always shine, the wind isn't always blowing. You need some way to store energy. And so we all can still agree that that is primarily the goal, is to be able to have battery energy storage.
And also to. To not have to produce more energy from non-renewable resources to meet peak demand.
That's right.
Right?
And also it optimizes.
So you want to have more diesel fuel and more wires and all that stuff, because they can buy the power at night and release it during the day and offset the need for more power generation in general.
That's right, and, you know, they're, around the world, they're the most, you know, realistic and effective choice to optimize energy storage management. Sometimes you, they produce too much energy, because it's super sunny and you, you would waste it if you didn't store it, right? So, so we know that we need batteries, we know we need energy storage systems. There's tons of different types of energy storage systems, by the way. Batteries are only one type, there's a lot of different ways to do it. Um, but batteries are one type of way. And so the concern is, well, where are these going to go exactly? And that the planning board wanted us to literally be like, you get battery storage here, here, and here. And we hesitate to do that, as you know, we like a level playing field and we don't, we can't just dictate what everybody does, because there's market demands, there's different, you have a litany of uses that you can choose from in your world of property rights. And so this was another land use type that you can choose from. Um, I think that the concerns of the community are understandable, because it's new. And anything new, you know, has a fear factor to it.
Have you been part of those processes? The concern primarily public health and safety from fires and explosions and that kind of thing?
Absolutely, and that, you know, the, and Christine can talk about it some more, but I mean, I think that it has to mostly to do with, you know, people can, being concerned about, um, you hear things in the news, like this car went on fire and it had a battery and they couldn't put it out with regular water and it burned for hours and hours, or we don't want to put PFOS on this stuff, you know, we already know what that does. So, so how does this work? You know, how do we contain a fire or how do we make sure that, you know, some component of the actual battery isn't leaching into the groundwater? And those are all legitimate things to be concerned about.
I wish John was here, because John and I have had conversations about this, and there's different types of batteries.
That's right.
And so I, that needs to be taken into consideration. I asked to have this conversation, because there are a lot of community concerns, and then watching the planning board meetings and just seeing their discomfort with how to ask questions and what questions to ask, because this isn't necessarily a planning issue where you're dealing with a site plan. There's very technical aspects of this. And they don't, they feel pretty ill-equipped, I mean, planning, they can lean on planning staff, but they want to feel comfortable with their decisions on their own without, without having to defer everything. Because at that time, you may as well just have planning staff say, this is where it's going and this is what you need to do. They have to make that decision and I want them to feel comfortable making that decision. And another part, when you're talking about environmental issues, right now, the only real way that we have to fight these fires is with putting tons of water on it. And you have to ask, okay, well, after the fire happens, where does all that water go and what's in it and?
Right, well, I mean, you know, not.
There are environmental issues.
Well, yes and no, I mean, the part of the law right now requires a whole safety plan and it does say procedures for safe, safe shutdown. So say there was, they're, they're not like out in the open, right? You're in a concrete building, like these batteries, they're in a building. And you have to have a procedure for safe shutdown, turning the energy off. It says procedures for safe shutdown, de-energizing, isolation of equipment systems under emergency conditions to reduce the risk of fire, electric shock, personal injuries, and then for safe startup. Now, what does that mean specifically? You would like to have that more clearly defined and we understand why you want to say, let's just pause for a minute and fix these things, and we have no issue with doing any of that.
Yeah, like, I think Ryan Murphy needs to be part of the conversation, our fire marshal.
If I could just, from the planning board's perspective, because I sit with them now. And, and this has been something, like, I, I think they want you to understand that they're all in support and understand the need for these systems as we go forward. I don't think it was so much that they were looking for one here, here, and here. I think they felt as though they wanted a more cohesive or holistic plan, because while it is supposed to be taking care of some of the peak times, it's not just our peak and it's for the entire East End. And we seem to be absorbing these while other municipalities around us may or may not, and it seems that there should be.
The East End already has one, right?
Yeah, but they're not, they're not siding over there, they haven't used it, as far as I understand, yet.
Oh, I saw this.
Well, we're not absorbing any from anyone else.
Can I just finish?
Sure, but I just want to correct that.
They just want, well, we don't know what we're absorbing. The, the point is, they wanted to have these discussions, so that they had a better understanding of what was expected of them. And then their discomfort lied in the fact that they don't know what a safe plan looks like. They were told in one instance of, um, that they needed to, they couldn't do underground because of X, Y, and Z. And they were all accepting of that. Then when there was some pushback on going underground, next thing we know, they can go underground. What, what, they don't know what the questions are that they should be asking to get the information. They need to make informed, educated decisions, that's just how they feel. And it's less of a criticism or anything like that with this, they just want to understand it and they want to represent all of you well and making sure they're addressing community concerns. We've heard recently about these fires, the safety issues, they don't know. They don't know what a safety plan looks like, they don't know what a decommissioning plan looks like.
So they, the planning board is asking for more detail in the underlying legislation?
Not so, uh, well, maybe, maybe that's part of it.
I'm a little bit confused, because that's, yeah.
That may be part of it, but I think more so, they'd like to put a pause, just so that they can get up to speed and maybe take some more targeted classes, so that they can understand exactly what they should be looking for in terms of weighing whether or not something needs to be underground, weighing whether or not they need a twelve-foot wall retaining, you know, thing around the perimeter of the property to keep the sound down. Is that reasonable or is that not reasonable? Does it need to, they, they just don't know what they don't know, is more or less the issue. And they just want to pause so they can get up to speed.
I need clarification, when you say go underground, you mean an installation of a battery facility below grade?
No, um, uh.
There were wires that connected up.
The utility?
Yeah, utility wires. I think as part of this, uh, what is missing is sort of more clarity on perhaps, like, some of these are potentially too far from an existing substation and what we didn't consider was more regulatory control over new substations. So with, with that, we can look at that, because, um, for example, someone may say, and this happened by, by my house with a solar farm, we didn't, they didn't anticipate that they're too far away and they built a whole new substation, literally, in addition to a solar farm. So, so we don't have a, and Mike and I looked into, like, some municipalities do have rules and regulations regarding new substations. So it could be, you know, uh, uh, surrounding that, we could look at those issues. Um, just in terms of newer, you know, we'll, we'll get the planning board and we've already, um, committed some budget toward training.
Training.
So I think that we can handle that.
Now, how many, how many battery storage facilities have come in under the code that we enacted?
Two, one has been approved and one is being weighed.
There's two, one is already approved.
Uh, I don't know that it's already approved, it had a neg deck, but I don't know that.
I went downstairs this morning, they told, Jeff told me it was approved. I know that we did the neg deck, last time it was on, he said we did a neg deck and we approved it, but we'll check on that.
Yeah.
But in any event, that was one that was.
The other one was a pre-app, so it wasn't a.
The one I know is very close to a substation, right?
Right, um, and that was, and it was one by the highway, like, there was no, nobody came out against that. It seemed to have, it was far enough away from everything, there was.
It's in the Cloverleaf, I think, of the.
Exactly, and there's, I mean, there's a section in here too, like, with, with needing a fifty-foot step setback from a residential property. And a lot of people aren't comfortable with that fifty-foot distance.
The NYSER model was what was used, and so obviously there, you know, they, they came out with all these guidelines. And at the time, everybody was going on with that, but as you see now, where they can go and perhaps, and with the size differentials, you know, it jumps from under six hundred to over six hundred and we like switch, you know, um, areas or zones where it's allowed. Like, that maybe needs to be, as we're now processing these, we see maybe we need to look at that a little bit more closely and figure out where it may be more appropriate for us here and maybe make those distinctions.
When you talk about moratorium, moratoria, whatever you want.
Moratoria, I.
I just get concerned that, you know, we've invited people based on our code to make application. Probably have expended a lot of time and money trying to come up with a proposal that met our code. And it is one thing to say, okay, we want to take a pause, we've got these two, they're under review, but if a third one comes in, we want them to come in under a different set of code language.
Um, I think the second one, no, the first one is all set and, and it meets all the parameters and, you know, I think we're good, you know, that one. Even if we change the code entirely, we would still permit that one, you know what I mean? So you're not losing anything from that one.
So the second one is the one that we're getting more.
The second one was a pre-app and they, and what you want to do, if you're going to do a pause, it's now, before they're in the queue and you have to exempt them, right? So you would want to do it, not necessarily exempt anyone.
I've been involved with a lot of these, you know, sometimes you say, anything that gets submitted after this date is subject to the moratorium. Or you can set the moratorium on a particular place in the process, which is what you're suggesting. So you're saying, suggesting a moratorium that would capture one of them, but not the other?
Correct.
And I'm saying, well, what about not capturing either?
Well, the other one was, is not a real application yet. We have a pre-application process.
There's no rights there.
There's no rights there. So we issue a report and we tell you all the things that you need to do. You need a variance, you have to go, you know, whatever. And that's all they, that's the only stage they got to, was a litany of issues in a report. And they did not make a formal application. Once someone makes a formal application, now you would likely exempt them from the moratorium. Usually, people who are in the pipeline, we typically.
Wouldn't it, it would take us probably two months just to put the moratorium in place.
Well, you must have a county referral. It, it would not be proper unless you did. So we have to have, you know, a draft local law, refer it to something county plan.
How long of a moratorium are you seeking?
I'm not seeking, you tell me what.
I would think three to six months would be.
Three to six months?
Would be what would be recommended. Listen, you have a law on the books, it's not like you didn't all think this through at the time. It's just that as you've now processed, you see the realities of what some of these issues could be. So I would not recommend going on something entirely long, I would think.
I would keep it short, two to three months.
Three to six months is usually short.
I think, I think, just to get training.
So, I think you can eat six months. So clear, what, what are the issues? There's, there's safety issues, because as far as fire suppression and, and making people aware of this, we, this was a discussion when we did enact these laws.
Right.
Um, as far as residential, there's going to be medallions on, on the electric meters. Um, there's also a mapping system, so fire, firefighters know if a particular residence has this. Uh, but you're more concerned about the, uh, the larger facilities.
We're, we're concerned with everything, I think, and this, I'm speaking on behalf of, you know, the, what I've heard from the planning board right now and you all are welcome to watch their hearings, because at every one of the discussions that we've had with the people who have come in for these things, these issues have been raised and the board has said repetitively, we're not comfortable with this, why this? So the, the issues would be not just the safety stuff and understanding that better, but the potential alternatives to some of perhaps the safety concerns and the, the alternatives in mitigation, like what they can do to mitigate some of those concerns. In terms of placement, it's a jump from under six, like eighty-five to six hundred and then over six hundred, it is commercial. Maybe there needs to be a little bit more of a distinction, in particularly if you're talking about residential, between eighty-five and six hundred. Those are vastly different, um, provisions for, and that could really, um, impact a residential neighborhood, if that's where you're saying you're allowing them and right now they're allowed there. So they want to look exactly at those, some of those things.
Sure, but I would also just clarify, we're not talking about battery storage and residential. We have opportunity areas and avoidance areas, and we made it very clear where we didn't want them, where they were to be avoided. And that was, um, you know, we didn't exempt residentially zoned properties, because some lands, like in, like, let's say, the West Hampton area, they're residentially zoned, they're like old sand mines. So why would you, you know, until we can act like maybe an opportunity zone and they can do it separately?
I was here when we did this code and we thought battery storage was a relatively benign use, that it was quiet and apparently maybe it's not so quiet.
Well, so the question is, um, you know, we can take another, we're happy to take another look at it.
We also had Ryan Murphy asked if, if, if he could weigh in on this, you know, as we go forward, because like all the fire marshals just went to a full-day symposium with NY, with the FDNY on battery energy storage systems and, and fire suppression and all that, and they have concerns, so.
As do our local fire department.
Yeah.
Good.
So all the, all the comments that the planning board has made is reflected in what the community is thinking at the same time? You know, the noise, where it is in residential areas, the fire suppression certainly, and, you know, that's all, big part of their concerns.
And, and, and like I said, like this came, the work session came up fast, I asked if the planning board chair could be here. I didn't hear back from her, but it was a short notice. Um, so please be open if any of those, um, planning board members reach out to you and you can hear from them as well.
Well, you'll get a referral on the code.
Can I just?
Right, but I want, before they even go down this avenue, I want to make sure they hear from them.
Because it's, because it's utility infrastructure for providing electricity to homes, I mean, it's, you have to have some proximity to where the energy is going, just like any substation or power station.
That was our thinking too. I mean, people are afraid that this is going to like, you know.
You know, whether it was a, you know, a, a water district infrastructure or communications, whatever it is, somehow you need to get it to the people, so it's sort of logical. And I think with some of the electrical gym, I, I don't know to the degree, like, if PSE and G or LIPA are proposing a substation, how subject to local, are they fully subject to local zoning?
They are not subject to anything and they'll be putting in batteries on LIPA-owned properties.
From a label perspective, they do not have absolute immunity.
Well, they have to, certainly have to follow secret and then.
They have to follow secret, but so far we've seen this.
Right, but they enjoy some exemptions, I believe.
Some immunity, but not fully, it's not an absolute immunity.
Right, and we don't really want to get in this situation where the state is going, you know, battery energy storage is a utility and it's, and it's not subject to local zoning. So we don't want that either, that.
Well, we're not there and all, we're, we're talking about maybe a three to six month pause to get, if, if we can get the planning board comfortable with this and comfortable with the zoning, I think we stand a good chance to get the community comfortable with it as well.
It's really comfortable, being comfortable with the siding, it's not the zoning. They, the planning board supports this, they, they want to be able to do this, they understand that it should happen and they want to facilitate good projects that should be and will help the communities that, that they, that you all serve.
I know, the, the one that is less evolved in the process, is it in a residential area?
No, it's in that clove, it's in that, you said.
No, 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 not that, the other one.
It's in highway business.
It's in highway business, but there are, there's, there are residences around there, that's not really, that was just another, a siding issue. But with regard to that one, I think that came up because of the twelve-foot wall that they said that they needed, I guess, to mitigate the noise that was going to surround the property. And then questions became like, well, what do you, what kind of noise is being emitted? And do they really need that wall and does it have to be twelve feet high and doesn't it need to?
In a highway business, can you build like a thirty-foot building? Right?
Yes, um, the, the thing is this, the planning board.
The wall of a one-story building.
Well, in, when you're talking about fences and walls, you're in a different territory than building.
Is it on the property line or is it set in?
Instead of going into the merits of that specific thing.
Initially, it was up by there, then they moved it back.
It would be better to just discuss the fact that the planning board, um, needs to know that they have the ability to say, well, if you're having a noise impact, at what level do you not have a noise impact? And pare it down to that level, instead of them being like, and this is just like any other board. Somebody asks for this and somehow it gets pared down to what, you know, and it's an iterative process.
They're just asking for a pause so that they can get better.
The planning board, is, the planning board's asking for this pause?
Yes.
Yeah, they've been, and you can go, like, listen to their meetings and they've asked us and they've spoken.
I've spoken to several of them.
And Janice and Jackie and myself had a conversation.
They were kind of blindsided by this whole idea when they first got it, because nobody really knew anything about it. So they're trying to get up to speed as fast as everybody.
Like I said, it's very technical for them, it's not, it's not like siding a building or landscaping, it's very technical.
Of course, we, um, would also just note that the planning board, and I'm all for doing a moratorium too, if that's with the board and you feel comfortable and that's what you want, but always and every time, if the planning board needs technical assistance, they can refer it to a technical expert. We have a charge-back provision in our code, so they don't have to become chemical engineers or battery science people, they don't have to be that.
They just don't know what questions to ask.
But they have a statutory timeframe to make a decision once there's a complete application, correct?
That's correct, correct.
So that's probably what they're. So that's probably what their concern is that they'll get a complete application and be forced to issue a determination within sixty days or whatever that statutory timeframe is.
Within sixty-two days of a public hearing, but that we do this all day long when it comes to traffic studies and everything else and send those things out. So it's identifying who is the technical expert that can assist them in making these determinations. That's part of this whole thing. So they feel like, well, this is beyond my understanding, but who can I give this to to give me a report back that I can, you know, now apply that? So, you know, there's some pieces there that I think we can put into play that will help them and the training and everything else. But, but planning boards are typically laypeople. We don't expect them to be the biggest technical experts, you know, and they should not be. So that's why we have professional planners and why we have technical experts that we refer things to.
And they're asking, they're asking for.
They were asking, they call it a pause. I mean, they're saying like, they want a timeout.
So if, again, let's say, let's say we agree to do, let's say after public hearing, we agree to do a three month. Timeout, a pause, moratorium. What do we hope to get done in that three months?
They really want education and training.
Well, they want education and training, but the point would be in the legislation.
But you're talking about amending the code. We don't, if we're doing a moratorium, it's to amend the code.
Yes, and I'm trying.
And we could get on the training and education now, as you were saying. I'm sorry, Janice.
No, it's okay. I'm trying to say we can go back and look at our avoidance areas and the, like Christine was saying, the megawatt, the kilowatts, the range.
The safety plan.
Ryan Murphy would like to look at the safety plan.
This, well, it requires him to, in the code every time, you know, the emergency operation plan that has to be, you know. Includes the following information and, and whatever. So we can have Ryan Murphy and John Rankin or whoever else look at these procedures. We did do that, by the way, but they now have new information, so they can.
But I think now they have new information.
Maybe they ask them for a report.
Maybe they.
As part of the process, like ask them for their report as part of the record.
We do, we would do that. We always refer.
No, I know you get referrals, but I'm just saying, but maybe they, the planning, like the planning board approves.
But in the code itself, right now, we can add a procedure. I don't know. We, we would have to just figure out what here is missing.
It's about tweaking. It's not about doing anything monumental.
Are there any other approvals needed by the, the, the one plan that's not the one in the public, the other one? Do they need variances and things like that based on the, but that typically happen before they go for site plan?
Yes. So you come in for what is known as a pre-submission, a site plan for a commercial, you know, application. You come for what's known as a pre-submission where, so we can outline all the issues so that nobody, you know, and it's like a, you know, community. Often says, we never heard about it, but literally you have like a three time chance to come in with, because we have this pre-submission. So the pre-submission is that we issue, we have a hearing, we understand upfront what people's problem, issues or concerns are. Or they're, they love it, rare, but does happen sometimes. And they, we write a report and we tell you, you've got twelve foot walls. We don't, you know, this doesn't meet code three thirty one oh nine, you need a variance. This has blah, blah, blah. You need to, you know, you're not maintaining your clearing, whatever it is. We write a report and we tell you what to go away and go do. Yes, that report has been adopted. What that particular one was trying to do was make amendments and get changes to their adopted report. We don't typically do that. You have to resubmit and we'll do a new report. We're not like ten bytes of the apple here. That's what a formal site plan is all about, not a pre-submission. What you give us in that pre-submission, the report reflects.
Did they then go to the zoning board after the report? They haven't made an application to the zoning board?
No. They're trying to sort of make changes now and get a better report. It's a pre-sub.
So that it might, so if they shrink certain things, they might not need variances.
Right, but they don't even need a new report. You could just come in in the final, you know what I mean? Like you don't have to go back for a second pre-submission report if you amended it. You would just make an application, a formal application. They have not done that yet. They went away with their pre-submission report with a to-do list, including variances.
I'm just trying to create sort of a distinction because yes, we can get the planning board training. That's very different though than amending the code. So it sounds like you are looking to amend the code to.
Well, we, we'd like to amend the code to understand some more of these avoidance areas if people have specific issues in terms of transition yards to residential.
Like the fifty feet.
The, the, the kilowatt hour size distinctions, you know, and just tighten all that up, I would recommend, and then the emergency procedures.
So what would the moratorium, would it prevent that one applicant or prevent the, the planning department from processing?
Yeah, so.
It's not meant to prevent that one applicant though. That one applicant raised a host of issues that in processing, they realized that they'd be dealing with. So it was, it's significant, it's not going to be any applicant.
Any applicant would be part.
You would stop processing their application?
We have stopped processing them. They're done. They, they are, a pre-submission happened.
They got their list of these issues, go do.
They issued their report. They have not submitted a formal application yet.
Is there anything that stops us from amending the code right now? And would, if we did, it would affect them.
No. You just have to know what you want to do.
Well, then you're not having, typically it protects the property owner as well because what rules are they operating under? It's not fair to change the rules in the middle of the game. That's typically why the moratorium makes sense.
And I just wondered where they actually, but the moratorium will change the rules in the middle of the game for them too.
But it stops the rules. It stops everything. There's no path anymore. You shut the door for a minute and said, let's get this in order. And then you reopen it again and then people can apply.
But if we didn't do a moratorium and we just enacted changes to the code, they would be subject to those new changes.
They can still apply. It's the rule of the day and it has to do with whether or not you shovel in the ground.
I just want to say, they may, after all of this is done, you may well decide you don't want to change anything. Like thi- this is getting the, the planning board educated and trained and looking at this a little more closely to see if whether or not there needs to now in practicality. Now that we see how it looks and feels when we're doing it, if we need to make any changes. If not, then you don't. But the planning board still needs to be educated, which was their primary.
We should be getting them educated, as you're saying.
Hundred percent. We did try to educate them.
Because we're going to have a hearing, we're going to, we're going to have to revoke, this has got to be referred to Suffolk County Planning Commission.
To quote George Lynch.
There might, there might give compelling reasons to not enact a, a moratorium. We don't know.
It's like fixing a car while you're driving it.
So I think that it's, we should be using this moment to make sure that they get the training, which you said you're already doing.
We're already doing, we're already putting budget toward it and getting that organized so that they can attend.
And the fire marshals just went to something recently.
So Cindy, what year, you want to introduce a resolution to notice a public hearing on a moratorium?
Yes.
So, we, we haven't heard from the planning board and as a board member, I guess.
That's why I'm, I'm kind of doing it by proxy.
I haven't heard about this at all and I'm the liaison to the firefighters. I mean, this hasn't come up in Southampton town. I'm not saying it's not an issue. But, um, I, and, and from what I'm gleaning here, that the issues that, that the planning board heard was about noise, about setbacks, about citing and safety. Is that, is that accurate? Is that, but those are, and, and as far as citing and, and different areas, so we're looking. We want to presumably look at the code to make changes in the code to address some of those.
If needed. The primary, their primary thing that was driving them to request this is they felt dis- discomfort with what they were being asked to do based on what they're seeing as these progress, as issues that are coming up that they were not prepared for. And they asked to take a pause. And that's why this came up fast. So I, that's why I was asking you and it would be great if you even wanted to reach out to them.
Well, I'm going to watch one of the planning board meetings where this, you know, so you're discussing something that I'm.
Yeah, you can see those two.
But, you know, maybe, you know, so our threshold was six hundred kilowatt hours. So below it is P, above it is special exception. Their, what Christine was suggesting is maybe there's a different number on that spectrum that, that, you know, P means you're permitted. Maybe that's not the right number. So based on all the fire safety knowledge, all of the, you know, at what level, at what kilowatt hours is there any noise?
Which is all, all the batteries are a problem.
So I'm asking, so I'm, I'm asking, I'm basically asking for a pause so that we can get the planning board comfortable, our emergency response comfortable. And maybe we do make some tweaks and maybe we don't.
I was unaware that they were uncomfortable of this. And that's something that I'm just hearing now, that they're, for whatever reason.
Well, they just, our fire marshals.
I, I've read some of the news reports too and the, the bicycle batteries, you know, causing fires in New York. There was a fire up on the North Fork with that particular car, you know, but one of these facilities, you know, there's fire suppression that's built in to it. This wasn't, you know, we, we were mindful of that, but I guess things are changing and now it's coming into.
And evolving. Like when you guys were doing this or initially looked at it, I think batteries were also in a different, like there are different battery options now too as well as that have been come up over the last.
And that's, and that's why I wish John was here because we were talking about this. There are different types of batteries that are not lithium based that we could potentially require that they use that there doesn't have these fire issues.
And it doesn't burn as hot. So, but we don't know that. Like these are just, we're not experts. We don't know.
We don't know.
I don't know what I don't know.
We don't know if those are viable systems. We don't know the cost of those systems, whether it makes any sense.
We know enough to know, we don't know. We don't know.
We, we passed all this legislation based on New York State recommendations.
It was the best at the time.
And we need to be updated on it. So Ryan has to get involved, fire marshals. I'd also like to hear from the local fire department because it's well and good if we say, yeah, the state says we can take care of fire compression. Ryan says it and then go to the local fire department and they're not trained for it. So I'd really like to, if we could even have a work session just on that.
Yeah, we just need to make fact-based decisions.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And you need to be aware to, like, like every.
Nobody's saying, don't do this. We're all just saying.
Every power station, you know, you have transformers all over the place. Those transformers have PCBs in them. Those fires lead to dioxide. I mean, there are, there are hazards related to our utility infrastructure as it is. And I, I'm not saying that that means we should go ahead and build battery energy storage, but we do want to meet, try to meet our goal of moving away from renewables and.
And they support that.
I think these things are part of our future as the way electric cars are part of our future. But they're not perfect technologies. I don't think we should ignore the community concerns. I think we need to make sure we address them and we do our homework. And we get fact-based answers and we involve our fire department and ambulance and make sure that we know that the sightings are proper. You know, it has proper access and equipment. So I'm not opposed to a short moratorium.
Short, very short. I wouldn't recommend more than that.
Three month, three month moratorium. I just want to make sure that it's beyond just educating our planning board, which we should be doing now.
It is. Right.
On the issue of the moratorium, just by happenstance, I was talking to the town attorney and Paul, Paul DeChant, who's the South Hall town attorney. He, we were just talking yesterday. He brought up that South Hall is trying to do a moratorium on battery storage too. And that planning commission was real reluctant. And so we can, we can get, we can reach out to Andy or we can get their reports just to see. We may have a little test case in front of us here.
Right. Well, I think we would meet the basic requirements in that we have a reasonable timeframe. We have a valid public purpose. We are addressing a situation that we're of, you know, the public safety impacts. We would adhere to the procedure, which is related to the planning commission.
Generally, they don't have an issue with it short.
And we definitely have an expiration date.
If it's six months, I think it'd be fine.
You know, basic parameters to making sure that you're doing it, you know, within the confines of what the law allows you to do.
I think South Hall was reaching for a year, right? I think they were reaching for a year. I don't know exactly too.
Do they have a law though on the books already? I don't know if they do.
I, I don't, it was just, I was just having a, I wasn't.
We do, so that's why I recommend.
I wasn't talking to them about that. It just came up, you know, and he just mentioned it. So I'll get their, I'll get their proposals and what, what, you know, either get from Andy or I'll get from Paul.
Does one applicant, it doesn't matter that one applicant would be affected by a moratorium?
I'm sorry?
Would this one applicant be singled out by a moratorium?
Um, not necessarily because that applicant has a report and that report indicates that the, they're not meeting the requirements.
I know everyone is. Effectively, it would be one applicant.
So the trajectory of that application is a denial if they can't meet the requirements, right? So I don't know that this is geared toward that.
So it could benefit them in some odd way?
I don't know.
If the code gets revised in a way that they might be able to meet.
I mean, who knows?
You know, I just think that, um, I, you know, being like, we want a moratorium is fine. But then understanding that the moratorium does end and battery storage is a real use that needs to be.
That we all understand.
But they all want that, but don't, don't.
Yeah, we all want it.
I want them, it's all sounding like they don't want it. They do.
This is for the public's sake who's listening to this because the public also tends to think like, we're going to stop this. We don't want anything like this anymore, you know, and this is really a pause, like you're saying, and not a, um. It's an interim step to ensure that what we're saying here is accurate and technically correct.
This is to alleviate their concerns, right?
Right, but I mean, it doesn't mean that we've just thrown battery storage out.
No, but it's to say, okay, we took a pause. We weighed all of these things in. We, we dotted our i's and crossed our t's and this is where we're at.
Sure. And we tried to do that in the first place, I want to mention.
I'm not saying you didn't judge.
One of these proposals we threw before, one of.
One of them is already on the track to approval and it's right next to a substation. And if LIPA owned that property, I, I can almost guarantee they would do it anyway. Without our citing criteria. So, um, we'll see. But, but I'm happy to draft the resolution. It would have to be a walk-on if you want to entertain it for the next agenda or it could be the next one after that.
Can I ask what kind of training that they're going to get?
Um, there's like a, um.
Does something exist? Is it safety? Is it?
Well, first of all, I know that Lynn knows a lot about this, Lynn Arthur, who does a lot of this, knows a lot about batteries per se and, and, and obviously electricity. Um, but she could come and do something. That, that's number one. Number two, there was something that was brought up recently. What was it? There was an app.
It was.
There's a, there's a, yeah, that does a training. There was like a.
A company that does this and we looked into it and.
There's training?
Yeah, I've, I've raged out to some people in the industry to get.
I mean, it's not cheap. We have to budget it for seven members.
Is that actual in-person training or online training or?
And our, our firing people just went to something.
I believe that one was online.
Is it online?
I think so.
I just looked at the budget.
So I've just been trying to find different, different, because, right, because Nicerta is very, I think they had some Nicerta training, but they found it very technical. And they, they want something more practical, something that's more planning based. So we're trying to find, you know, different, different avenues for them. And I think I found a couple of consultants and also that one training that I forwarded to you for them.
And there'll probably be more things that develop over time that they can take advantage of as they go, but at least they'll feel like they have some base of knowledge so that the processes.
Position here is that the technology has changed to that degree in the months that we, you know.
I don't necessarily know if it's the technology by itself, it's the practicality.
No, I think.
We need to take a pause. We need to take a look at the code that we just instituted and, and.
It's how it's working.
Train our planning board members in order to cite these things to address noise, setback, citing and, and safety.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't we not, I mean, we did this.
Yeah, but I think it's like anything. Once you start doing it, questions arise.
Well, I, I heard it once from a, a recent public hearing that someone said that they were going to put a cot next to the thing and sleep there. You know, because of the location that it was being cited in, in one of our particular hamlets.
I mean, we can be more specific about where these systems are appropriate. But again, you usually cast a wide net so that you have a level playing field. You don't make it so that someone gets a windfall and someone else has no opportunity. You know what I mean? We try to make it very broad, but for a very specific reason in that we don't want challenges that you've made this just so one guy can do it and I can't. And, you know, those things are real. These are truly things that people say. So we try to be broad, but we can try to at least, you know, drill it back into, you know. Well, here's a, a substation and if you were any more than this many feet away, you would need another substation. So you can't be there. You know, or, or those more specific criteria, which I know the planning board has been very clear to me that they, at least the chair, to say they wanted us to much more closely point out where, instead of just, you know, anywhere.
And how about the residential battery?
And it's not really anywhere. We do have the avoidance areas, but maybe we need to add some more places to that.
And the residential installations?
Residential installations are still, I think, you know, now that's enough, that you might want to exempt because there is part, these are all different sections of the code. So you have a section that allows just somebody to put individual storage systems at a rating of not more than twenty kilowatt hours. So that's just batteries in your basement. People are building the Tesla walls in their basement, you know, and we still are meeting the building code and the, um, fire prevention code. So I would recommend you exempt those.
We're just looking at the, we're just looking at the commercial.
You're looking at the large scale utility scam.
You can exempt those from the moratorium.
Yeah, I would exempt, the moratorium wouldn't even be on chapter one twenty-three. So this code had multiple sections that you were dealing with. The moratorium would need to be in chapter one twenty-three, which is about just single family.
We're looking at one over six hundred.
They just said the more large scale.
We're talking about the special exception ones, the large ones.
The large ones.
Yeah. Um, and that's under three thirty one sixty-two point two one.
Why don't you write it up? And then we got to try to walk this on or just do it at the next meeting?
I could do it at the next meeting if you're, you know, I don't think anyone, we're really in any peril.
I, I would love for the sponsor to give input on this.
That's me.
The sponsor of the original code that was, was created last year, yeah.
Oh, John?
Before we start.
I did talk to John about this.
Okay. So how about we don't do it so immediately, like Tuesday, and I'll develop it and we'll have a chance to look at it.
And you can trend, you can maybe circulate to all of us and.
Sure.
This way.
And please, if like, we reach out to the board, the planning board members too, so you can hear from them.
I can watch the planning board meeting where they discuss this and read the report.
I mean, if you want to come to us at the work session that we're, it's in the draft packet and just explain what.
Maybe we can have Jackie with that one.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do that.
Good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Not to give you anything else to do, Janice.
Head to the list. Please, it's not, you're not going to tweak it.
Enact it, pause it, reenact it.
We're just going to, we're going to put her in a duplicating. We're just gonna, we're gonna put her in a duplicating machine.
Rinse and repeat, thank you.
Thank you.
Rinse and repeat, alright, yeah, we, alright, so, um. I guess updates, I don't really have anything.
Yeah, I just have, uh, the Great East End cleanup is coming up, if you can sign up, it's, uh, on our website, April twenty-second and twenty-third. We had, you know, a couple hundred people last year involved, uh, it's getting bigger and bigger after COVID. So if we get a few more teams out there, I'll be visiting, uh, quite a few groups on Saturday to thank them for their dedication. You know, local beaches, our parks, our roadways, we're all getting cleaned up by volunteers, so more to Maryr, if you can come out and sign up, you'd be great.
Um, I just have two quick things, one is the hometown heroes banner program, there are still a few spots left. Um, I would think the cutoff would be no later than May first, if you wanted to get one in. Um, and then as the liaison to the trustees, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that they did have a meeting on Monday. Um, they walked on a resolution to add money to their part-time budgets. Um, the resolution that they walked on stated that they were short money for the piping pulver program. Um, so if you get any phone calls or any concerns, I just want to make you aware that I did reach out to them and, and, and as did the controller. The piping pulver program was fully funded, um, they actually hired, I think, two other additional part-time employees outside of the pulver program. And the money that they put in will cover those employees, but we did fully, we actually increased their part-time budget by ten percent this year, so.
In, in the twenty-three budget, over twenty-two.
Yes.
But the resolution said we cut it.
They said we did not fully fund the piping, and they, and they, and I mean, they went on about how it was a very important program and they were doing the right thing and. We know it's a very important program and that is why we fully funded it and.
I mean, when you do budgets, you know, you do your best to predict what the future holds. You don't really know if a partic- if it's gonna be a lot of pulver nesting that particular year coming and you need to add more people. And so you take within the budget and say, okay, there are things that maybe we're not doing this year that are funded, that we can shift it over. It, it, I don't think that we didn't properly fund the trustees and. I, and I did raise that issue with Scott yesterday on a phone call that, you know, it's, it wasn't really fair to say that we didn't properly fund it. That, you know, we do that with our own budget, sometimes one line goes over and another line goes under and we shift money around to deal with that. So, uh, I asked him to sort of refrain from that sort of language, we'll see if, if that, that happens.
I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, in case you're asked, that we did fully fund that program.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, and, uh, well, tell me, John, do you have anything you wanna share?
At this time?
I know you were involved with the, um, swearing insert, we had the youth court. I saw you there, that was very nice and thank you for that. Um, and I thought, uh, Lynn Nylas did a very nice job and it looks like we have a good crew of people in our youth court. Um, if you wanted to say anything about that.
It's a very popular program, good for kids, I know Rick, you're the liaison to the youth bureau and Cindy was there as well. Um, and, uh, I don't know, we, we, we swore in probably about twenty-five, uh, kids into our youth court program.
Yeah, it was good, it was nice, um.
You know, they, they definitely have a, it's a popular program and it's great for kids and it's great for them moving forward in their lives.
You know, and, uh, the blinking lights started again, as people are aware, up at Canoe Place Road and. It seems like it's working, it's helping, I know Cindy, you were.
Was there Monday morning?
Were there Monday morning, um, we, uh, we started at April third, um. You know, it's, it's highway and it's police and, um, I, I don't think we're doing anything yet in the afternoons, um. You know, we're still doing our best to relieve traffic and we still haven't gotten the report from Tom about when we blinked all those lights on County Road thirty-nine. Though I'm not optimistic that that it, uh, made any positive change. But, uh, you know, if, if people have all the suggestions, the things that we could try, um, you know, traffic is bad again. And, uh, I know whenever there's an accident, it gets particularly bad and obviously, you know, people typically understand that. But we, you know, I, I have asked the police for some, um, emergency routing plans so that if we have areas where. You know, we have seen accidents happen more frequently perhaps than others that we can. We have a plan in place that we can execute to say, these are the roads that we're gonna divert traffic down to help traffic flow. And, uh, you know, there might be some places we need to create connector roads and we are doing the, uh, the Greenfield Road subdivision. Uh, that road off of Hill Station Road that will lead into that community or lead out of that community, but could be, uh, reversed to lead in. In, in an emergency, so things like that may help on those emergency situations.
You know, on that note, like this morning, for instance, uh, Pleasure Drive in Flanders and Route twenty, um, twenty-four was backed up. Incredibly this morning and the, the people in Flanders have a tough challenge, Pleasure Drive was backed up tremendously. Coming down twenty-four, they take the side roads to try to cut through, you know, we've had PD there last year, they've worked on it diligently. Try to keep, keep people from, from cutting through, but they're interrupting with school buses, we have semis going down the middle lane, I mean, it's dangerous. And we've asked the county to help us out there and they have done nothing.
Was it, is county or state, cause it's, it's, twenty-four is state.
State, they will send the state troopers once in a while to patrol to make sure they're not using this in our lane.
We could try blinking those lights, again, it's manpower and I think the state would be looking for us to make some sort of emergency declaration. To say that we have an emergency and we're going to blink, we're gonna take over those two lights and put them on blink. Because of fire safety, ambulance, public safety, um, so we could potentially do that, we could try it. Or maybe when it backs up to a certain point where we feel like it would take too long for us to get an ambulance, a police car out to somebody in need. I, I honestly don't know though, it's gonna solve much of a problem, other than moving that twenty-four traffic to Sunrise to get stuck again.
Well, it leaves some, it leaves Sunrise, I mean, the, the apps on your phone, they make a decision when you are pretty much just past West Tampa.
Send your pleasure drive.
And then you, when you get these quag, you either cut and go to Montark Highway or you get right off to Pleasure Drive, come down twenty-four. Whatever will save you three minutes, you know, and it's terrible.
And then while we're talking about traffic and energy.
By the way, people go down Dune Road, they go down Dune Road all the way to the Ponquod Bridge and come up that way. It's cra- it's crazy, but.
So our town engineer is going to a Department of Energy conference in DC, I think he's leaving Friday. He is riding his bicycle there and back.
Is he really?
To where, to DC?
Yes, to a Department of Energy convention.
Wow. And well, he does ride his bike to work, I think from the, like, the North Fork, you know?
Yeah.
A lot of times he'll drive to Flanders and.
And I sometimes wonder whether he gets here faster by bicycle than by car.
I think he does some mornings. I don't know, well, he said he was, he was gonna take the train, I think, to the city, take a ferry to Staten Island and then bike from there. And I said, how sad is it that you can ride your bike from Staten Island to DC, but you can't get off the island? He said he didn't wanna deal twenty-five.
So we are gonna schedule work session two on another matter, we, you know, we got this two million dollar grant, it's just shy of two million from the state on ADUs. Um, accessory dwelling units, which is sort of the low hanging fruit in a way with, uh, creating affordable housing. You know, we know how challenging it is when we take a property that would only, under zoning, have one house or two houses and we try to build twenty or thirty units. Um, creating apartments within existing dwellings and garages, um, basements and things like that. Does tend to spread it out and is a potentially way to get it, get apartments very close to where people are actually working. Um, so we have a, a two million dollar grant, we're working with CDC LI, Community Development Corporation of Long Island as our administrator. But we have to make some changes to the code, because, you know, our code is pretty restrictive in terms of, uh, creating, uh, accessory dwelling units. So we're gonna have CARA in and we'll have CDC, um, come in and work with us so that. We can talk about modifications to our accessory apartment law. So right now we have restrictions, certain communities, you're not allowed to do them at all, um, unless you have over three quarters of an acre. Um, other areas, you can do them at half an acre, um, but there's a lot of conditions. And, uh, that's sort of why people aren't really putting in accessory apartments. Um, the homeowner has to be year-round, why does the homeowner need to be year-round, right? Is that, could, could you have a homeowner who spends some of the year in another community, still have an accessory apartment that's year-round? I mean, that's a board decision, but, but, uh, we have a real problem, as we all know, with a lack of housing for our workforce. And so we might have to really take a hard look at some of these issues and say, you know, it's not perfect, but we need to, we need to open that door a little bit. And not force us to have just the, the concentrated developments, the apartment buildings. So, um, I'm setting that up, um, alright, so any other things for the, for the board? Alright, so we do have executive session, um, bef- uh, sec- executive session will be, uh, for confidential legal advice, personnel. Um, and contracts, uh, but before we do that, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh. Uh, wish everybody, uh, the Jewish faith a happy Passover and also the Christian faith, a wonderful Easter holiday. It's a really important time of year for everybody and, uh, as you enjoy your family and friends, just of course, uh, be careful. Um, uh, driving and all, all, you know, the things I normally say, but I, I really want everybody to have a wonderful holiday season, so.
So that was a great reminder, cause we do have two events in Hampton Bays this weekend, Saturday morning, there is pancake breakfast and an egg hunt. At the Hampton Bays ambulance and, uh, in the midday, we have the Chamber of Commerce Great Egg Hunt, so. I'd be in trouble if I didn't mention it, so thank you.
Good.
At Good Ground Park.
That's, that's great, alright, so, uh, to everybody, happy holiday and, uh, to the board. Um, we're gonna make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a second on that motion?
No, I'll second it.